Agenda to the work session, I'm going to ask Mr. Byron Brooks, the county administrator, to come forward regarding the presentation on the potential for a transportation sales tax. No action today is being recommended on this item. This is just information and then for discussion by members of the board. With that, Mr. Brooks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Demings, and good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
As the mayor noted today, as well as his memorandum that he sent two weeks ago, the intent today is for an open discussion by the Board of County Commissioners as it relates to transportation sales tax initiative. The mayor's intent was to indeed start this process this time around with open discussion. So I don't have a one-hour presentation to give. We don't have the thousand-page document this time, but rather, we are looking for here to talk about the 2022 effort, a few milestones for you, and hopefully in about eight minutes be out of your way so that you can start your open discussion. I want to quickly remind the board about what drove the 2022 transportation sales tax effort. It was a bottoms-up approach. As you know, it started with community engagement. It is process. If you recall, there were community-wide surveys were conducted, approximately 300 in-person points of contact, which included a number of community meetings, large community meetings, each commission districts and neighborhood meetings, as well as small group meetings as well. In a day, we use these touchpoints. We use the citizens' input to help develop and let them tell us what they thought was important. So the residents of Orange County, through this survey, through these community meetings, through those 19,000 surveys completed, for example, indicated to us what they believe were the key transportation challenges. Perhaps no surprise to anyone, traffic congestion, transit needs, and bicycle and pedestrian safety were identified by the citizens. Also, those survey results indicated their key findings, what they said was important, what they believed would be their priorities for moving forward. Again, as you see in the slide, those top five priorities from those surveys, from those community touchpoints, was building a mass transit system, maintaining our roads, keeping them in good conditions, some safety issues such as traffic signal timing, improving Sun Rail system was a constant, and widening our existing roads. So that's what led to the development of the transportation needs study. That was a combination, that citizen input combined with the numerous studies from the county, from the cities, from Metro Plan Orlando, from Lynx. Those studies over the years, those analyses that were done were the basis of what did comprise that thousand-plus-page document that identified our transportation needs. At that time, and these were 2019 numbers when we developed that plan, identified needs, transportation needs ranging between $13 billion to $18 billion in cost. Just quickly to remind you what was also discussed as part of that allocation of the plan for the funds that would be generated. And what's notable about this is the position of transit. This was the first ever initiative that put transit on equal footing with roads. And so that allocation that was proposed, discussed, and I know you heard a comment a little earlier today about the allocation, the proposal in 2022 allocated 45% for transit, 45% for county for roadways. It also included county roads in cities that we had a understanding of how those would be handled in terms of us picking up the costs out of our allocation. And then there was 10% of the total amount that would be allocated and shared among the counties, the cities, based on population. Then I wanted to touch on another key element of the 2022 effort was indeed this oversight structure. And I believe there had been some comments about how the oversight component of this worked. And it did include a structure in place for that. The components of it included a technical committee. This was staffed. This was a staff committee with its only purpose, primary purpose, really for coordination of efforts, just to review the projects. It had no decision-making authority, but rather to see where we may see the ability to collaborate through looking at everybody's projects or collaborate on projects, or see how we may sequence projects as well. The citizens' oversight board, and this reflected the last change that the board made at this last hearing as well, the citizen oversight board is the place that would have the opportunity for citizen input, citizen review into the projects, what was submitted as well. It was comprised in its last iteration of citizens. The board got appointments. Each commissioner had an appointee to this board. The city of Orlando had an appointee. The other cities collectively would point to folks to represent those other cities that were participating. They would have the opportunity to work with the comptroller's office with respect to requests of audits and anything of that nature. However, according to law, law, if you all recall from the case in Hillsboro County, only the Board of County Commissioners can make decisions, be it cities or any others, only the Board of County Commissioners. And so the last step in this process, in terms of approval of any of the projects, interviews, everyone else was more as advisory to the Board of County Commissioners. But that decision-making authority must rest and can only rest with the Board of County Commissioners. And just want to note the support that we had from the cities. You had eight of the, I'll call them eleven participating jurisdictions. As you may recall, Lake Bonneville Vista and Bay Lake opted out, just because they do their thing at that time in a different way as well. So of the 11 remaining cities, eight did submit letters of resolutions of support to the Board of County Commissioners. I will note, though, that all 11 submitted their plans, their projects, to be included in the plan if it passed. Wanted to just quickly note, too, because this was a very, we believe, very helpful element of the plan, that if it goes forward, that certainly we can look at ways to enhance this. But after the board made the decision in April advance, as you recall, this toolkit, this dashboard was developed, and it was available to the citizens of Orange County. And it, all the plan, the projects, all the projects, every project was identified, all the projects, be it streetlights, be it sidewalks, be it intersection improvements, the bus routes, all those things were identified in the plan, and that was put in the dashboard. And it was an interactive dashboard that enabled any citizen to go online, click in their address, and see what projects were in the vicinity of their home. They can see what the impact could be based upon where they lived and what projects were being proposed. So as we now get to the discussion portion for 2024, just wanted to note a timeline. And what I really want to call to your attention is the date that's highlighted in orange, that April 23, 2024 date. That becomes the key decision date in the deliberations for the Board of County Commissioners, because that's the date by which a decision must be made to put this matter on the ballot before the voters. It is driven by the state. So the state passed in legislation a few years ago, a requirement that if a jurisdiction wanted to advance a sales tax initiative, a new sales tax initiative, you had to do an APAGA study. That's the Office of Program Policy Analysis, Government Accountability. The state conducts that audit. They hire independent auditors, and they audit us. We have to submit that resolution, that ordinance of the intent and the project in time so that the APAGA study can be completed 180 days, at least by 180 days prior to the date of the referendum. So when we back up from that requirement, then that puts this board in a timeframe of a key date of April 23, 2024. And I will note, certainly seeing Raffeta, Aiken, and the team here, in 2022, when we went through that very exhaustive APAGA study, we passed with flying colors. They look at our ability to execute on the projects on the plan that's conducted. It is a very exhaustive review of all of our policies, our procedures, our procurement process, our capacity to get projects done. And that APAGA study did conclude that indeed we had the capability. They were satisfied with what they saw in our work. And very quickly, I just wanted to pivot and add to this about the accelerated safety transportation program, because I think it is important for the community to know that this Board of County Commissioners has not just sat silent and done nothing over that past period of time. In addition to the over $75, on average, million dollars a year that our Public Works Department is doing with respect to safety improvements and sidewalks, in addition to the additional amount that goes of about $80 million a year that goes to Lynx, the board adopted the Accelerated Safety Transportation Program, which is a $100 million initiative to look at how, and the intent was to look at our existing resources. Out of our existing resources, could we pull and squeeze and tighten to even get more dollars for transportation safety improvements? And so this was the plan that the board approved last year that identified programs focused on transportation, I'm sorry, on safety and transit elements, amenities, and some services. It was designed to be done in a five-year period of time. This was a financing, as you all recall, so this is a one-time pot of money available to us. Nowhere meets the needs that have been identified. It was a one-time pot of money. And this work is underway. In fact, you may recall, last board meeting, the board approved some contracts that were related to this. In about a month or so, Lynx will be bringing forward its first agreement associated with this effort as well. And so it is moving along. And that last note about the GIS tool, hopefully in the next two months, within the next two months, we will have that tool available for citizens to follow the Accelerated Safety Transportation Program so that they can see where we are on those projects that were identified for this program. So as we now kind of, again, focus on matters that certainly may be of interest to the board, as you all are discussing and considering what you may want to do in the future as it relates to sales tax, there are obviously items that we know are of interest to the board, of interest to the community. Watching the economic trends, both locally and nationally, it certainly are one of those factors. And so as we continue in the discussion, if that's what the board so chooses, we certainly know that you will have great interest in the economy and what it portends. Our county fiscal position, what I'll say is, as you all are aware, we own very sound financial footing. The issue, the challenge is, the revenue sources available for us for transportation are limited in terms of the needs. And that's why Orange County, much like many other jurisdictions across this state, well, it's across this country, look to sources like the sales tax. That's why it's available, in this case, the Charter County Transportation Sales Tax, because those revenue sources that are available for transportation, because they are so significant in terms of the need, it needs a revenue source that can keep pace. Gas tax doesn't keep pace. We have impact fees. The board has maxed the amount of impact fees that can offset some costs of new development as well. You've done that. You've taken that action. And so we use some additional current state sales tax, but those needs, as you saw, are certainly notable. And the transit component and those discussions have certainly gotten even more prominent in any consideration of the sales tax. As you all know, on the Sun Rail transition, Secretary Tyler noted, we anticipate perhaps by the end of this year, starting in 2025, the local will have to take on that funding responsibility. The conversation now is DOT will take on operating. They will continue to support us for a while on the operating side, but the local government, the local funding partners will have that responsibility, as we've known. We've known for many years, that day is coming, would come, and that day is now coming. That will hit on our books as a responsibility for our share. The Sunshine Quarter, you've had a lot of conversations about that, the Sunshine Quarter, that project. In order to advance that project, it will take local funding as well. Obviously, we are fortunate. There have been private sector parties that have talked about contributing to the project. We will look for federal and state dollars, but they will take a local share for the capital as well for operating. And then just a couple of other points, almost done, with respect to items that may be of interest to the Board of County Commissioners in terms of the November 2024 ballot. As most of you may know, Orange County Public Schools intends to place the renewal of its capital outlay surtax and house sales tax that's currently in place. Now, they're going forward for renewal, and they anticipate putting that on the November ballot. Clearly, you all have been following the Charter Review Commission, and whatever measures come out of that, that makes it sway to the ballot, that would be considered. And then as a point of information, obviously not in Orange County, but a point of information, Seminole County will be going, or anticipates going, to the ballot in November as well for renewal of their infrastructure sales tax as well. And then just an update on the numbers. Yeah, before you, if you all remember, in 2022, that estimate, one penny of sales tax at that time was estimated to create about $596 billion a year. Current estimates show that one penny is estimated to generate about $759 million. So it certainly has increased in terms of the revenue amount. Conversely, the expenditure amount has increased substantially. As part of this process, if there's interest in continuing discussion, we will update those numbers as well. So that $18 billion worth of needs that you saw before, we know without a doubt. We've seen, we know what our estimates are coming in now in terms of the projects we're doing. So we know that number will grow as well. And what I just wanted to note that, as we conclude, as I conclude, key steps that we envision over these next couple of months, depending upon the discussion today, we know that what's critical, those critical steps, clearly commissioners' involvement in this planning and this development and the project and the approach. And so we look forward to that. The community engagement, I think it's important to continue that. That was such an important, valuable part last time around. Discussion with the municipalities. We sat down last time. We had an agreement, understanding with the municipalities last time around. We would continue with that same discussion this time around. We need to update the transportation plan. We have engaged a consultant to start that work. Lynx is doing the same. They've engaged consultants to start their work of updating the transportation needs plan. And we had a number, it was a very intensive staff effort, and we had a number of committees, about 10 staff committees, that were involved in some way that we would get activated. And so that's today's, that's the presentation. And again, going back to the point of today's discussion, is we, and we have staff that are here as well, but primarily, we are here to hear what the board's consideration, ideas, thoughts about moving forward. And that concludes the presentation, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. If you'll stand by. Just the only thing that I would add is that this is the opportunity that our Board of County Commission has to have this discussion in the sunshine before all of our citizens. We have not made any decisions at this point about moving forward with an initiative to advance the transportation infrastructure sales tax referendum to the ballot at this point. In order to do that, what Mr. Brooks has pointed out, there's a lot that has to be done, and there's a timing issue. What I will tell you and all of our public is that I frequently hear complaints from our residents and visitors about the lack of a true multimodal transportation system within our community. And they complain, in other words, about traffic congestion. They complain about how the need to continue building roads impacts our environment in a negative way. We heard that quite a bit this morning. And quite frankly, if we, as a major metropolitan community, do not come up with other alternatives to moving people around in this growing community, we're going to continue to see the traffic congestion worsening. And so as visionary leaders, I believe that a visionary leader is someone who anticipates the need for something before it's needed, and they take action in a timely manner. So we have tried as a community on several different iterations to advance transportation sales tax to the ballot to get the electorate to vote for it, and it has not passed. In the last 20-plus years, there have been concerted efforts to do that. And as a result of that, our community has continued to grow in terms of our population. I don't have to tell you all, commissioners, you see what's happening to your districts with the development and everything, and all indications are, the population is going to continue to grow. I don't have to tell you about the visitation to our community that has grown extraordinarily. This past weekend, we got to play host to world-class events with the Olympic Marathon trials happening right here in our community. It brought people in. We hosted the NFL Pro Bowl here. We opened a new jazz entertainment club at the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center. We hosted MegaCon. I haven't heard the final numbers, but it was projected that over the weekend, we could see as many as 160,000 people coming in. Now, if you look at all of that, those people need to be moved around our community. We need to move around the community for those of us who live here. And somebody has to pay for those improvements. We have researched for years now, different methodologies to be able to raise the deficit of funding that is needed. And the transportation infrastructure sales tax has been the best fit for us because it not only can pay for capital, but it can pay for the operating costs. Byron set it up perfectly when he talked about the transition of Sun Rail, the commuter rail system, to local partner financial responsibilities. We know that that's coming. Since 2022, when, with the ballot initiative, a lot of things have continued to happen in our community, and some of that is good news. We now have the intercity connectivity with Brightline that is underway. We have said all along that in order to address the current and the future needs from a transit perspective, we needed private sector investment. So Brightline is a private sector investor in our community. We've even seen Universal Resource Orlando step up to the plate with the Sunshine Quarter and offer some additional funding to make the reality of having intracity connectivity with a multimodal mode of transportation available to us, because they understand that as Epic Universe is on the horizon, likely will open sometime in 2025. All of that, again, means that it will position us perfectly to compete globally in the theme park industry. That means visitation. That means, from an economic perspective, we will make significant dollars because of that. But quite frankly, we run the risk if we do not resolve some of the transportation issues with losing our competitive edge with other localities in the U.S. domestically and with the foreign or the global competition that's out there. So as we kind of have the conversation today, this is not about making the decision today. Byron laid out the timeline. A decision will have to be made by April. The only reason why I asked to put this on the ballot today, or put it on the ballot, is so that we can have a conversation. If this Board of County Commission, through consensus, has no interest in having the conversation about the potential for a sales tax, then we can stop right now. But if you want to have the conversation, you want to have the information by which to make an informed decision, then we have to task our staff with providing the research, the data, the information. We will have to engage with some consultants to validate some of the assumptions that have been made. That would all have to come back before the board. So what I'm looking for today is simply to gauge your interest in fact-finding. And if you are interested in fact-finding, to give staff that direction to do that, we have to have some consensus. Otherwise, we will miss the timelines that are laid out at this point. So again, that's kind of where we are today, and we will open it up for a conversation. This is a conversation. If we, as the board, decide to advance this to the ballot, again, we will learn from all of the mistakes we made in the past. We will perfect that plan. As we go forward, we would need, I hope, the unanimous support of our board to help carry this across the finish line. That's the optimism that I have about it. I don't know that we'll get all members of the board, but this would not be a mayor's initiative. This will be a Board of County Commissioner initiative. This will be a community initiative. I was thankful to see Mayor Brian Nelson from Apopka come forward. He's caucused with some of the mayors from west Orange County. You might recall from the presentation that there were eight municipalities that signed on. One of them that didn't formally sign on was Apopka. But he's coming forward today with a proposal at this time, you know, what he would need to see in order to wholeheartedly support it and get out and become an advocate for it, because we made a decision the last time strategically that we would share the proceeds with the community, with the counties, and with the cities, I should say. But the entire community and our cities would benefit from this plan. Byron, one question, I don't know that it was in there. With the projected revenues that at $759 million on an annual basis, how sure are we that that's the number? And what's the, what do we think the true need is today, unmet need? What's the estimated value of that?
Sure. So on the revenue side, this, the 759 is based upon the most recent, let's just say, last month. We just look at what the sales tax collections have been. And so our budget office, OMB, I don't see current, but OMB just simply looked at what our current collections are with respect to sales tax, what a penny of sales tax is generating now, and that's his estimate based upon that. The estimates that you see going out 20 years or 30 years, the assumptions in that was a 3% increase. So we looked at current year, then multiplied it out, but with a 3% increase built in. That's the part, that's the estimate. Kind of look back over time and what it may do. And as the comptroller oftentimes points out to us that there, it doesn't go straight line. It kind of goes up and down, but nevertheless, over that period of time, we get that, that estimate. With respect to the expenditure side, Mayor, we have not yet updated that number, the $18 billion or so from the 2022, which was actually a 2019 estimate based upon the factors that we were using. We've not yet updated that. We have engaged with a consultant to begin to do some preliminary. That's one of those tasks, working from that last list. What, we have some assumptions based upon what we've seen, our cost escalation, some factors, construction index factors. But we decided, because transportation may be unique in some ways, we'd rather, before we put a number out there, we'd rather wait and get that estimate from the consultant's work.
Okay. And there's a lot of other information needed. But I'll open it up. We'll start with Commissioner Wilson. But I'll open it up, we'll start with Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Byron. I, you know, fundamentally believe in good infrastructure investment. So I had a couple of thoughts, but then I also had a question. Having a little postmortem on this and talking to residents consistently, what the residents in my neck of the woods shared with me was that they never really got an understanding of how this would benefit them. And they continue to share with me even now that they're hurting, that the cost of living continues to go up, inflation is going up. Our millage has been steady, but property values are going up. So they're continuing to pay more. And so, you know, I don't know what the number crunching would be for something that would be able to potentially offer, you know, less of a millage going forward in our continuing, if we're watching property values go up, if this passes. Because I do think that what they took away was that this potentially could be a windfall for developers who are paying into prop share, who wouldn't have to maybe do that to the extent anymore or impact fees because that's double dipping and you can't do that anymore, from my understanding. And maybe we can get further into that. Because my area, there was many, many different agreements with private development interests that when we went out to talk to residents, pretty much there was nothing to bring them. Because all those roads were already spoken for in development agreements through either prop shares or they were waiting for other pieces to come together in a development component. And there was no real plan for transit. I don't know if you recall, but in the last, of the last meetings that we had, the legend for the map, they put the actual key, the legend, right over Horizon West, where we've added, you know, 50,000 new residents. And so I think having tailored, what I feel like the last one was to, I called it the, your existing customers, right? The people that already get transit, the people that are already in areas that are getting more attention. And then a lot of these areas that are in our growth centers that are growing really fast and have been told, oh, you know, this will be paid for by this, you know, shared development agreement, they're going to be waiting another 10, 15 years. So, you know, trying to address that, at least in our areas of new growth. Additionally, I think hearing the dialogue at the CRC meeting, the CRC has a subgroup, of course, looking at transportation. And I think it's been a really interesting dialogue. They asked the Christian Service Center, they asked Eric Gray to come in and speak. And I thought it was a really interesting thing that what was supposed to be a 15-minute presentation about homelessness and how transit and transportation affects homelessness, ended up being like a two-hour discussion. And what it informed me of, and I feel like it's something that can really be helpful if we move forward with this, is that there were no voices for that interest as we developed a plan. And so having somebody like that from our homeless services that is really boots-on-the-ground, that can help us explain, you know, help explain to the public that an investment from, this type of investment, may have effects in employability, educational opportunity. And thus, you know, potentially helping us with our homelessness. And so we know the rents are going up and continue to be too high. They've been really high. And we didn't really have an answer to that. And voters spoke and said, we're still suffering, but then we couldn't do anything about it, right? We got preempted. And what they said was, we don't have enough capacity right now to consider investing like this. But maybe we asked them the wrong way. And maybe we offered them the wrong trade-off. So I just kind of wanted to put those thoughts out there. And if you, if my colleagues haven't had a chance, go back and maybe take a look at the minutes from that CRC meeting. It was very interesting in giving a voice to maybe the voiceless that were not involved in that last discussion. I think the environmental community, you know, has the seed there, right? We definitely heard from the usual suspects, right? But what their takeaway, my environmental community takeaway was, oh, this is going to be more pavement. This is going to be the add another lane approach. And so it was really hard to build consensus in that community. So if we're losing our social services community and our advocates there, and we're losing our environmental community and our advocates there, and we keep going back to the same people that have been in this conversation, maybe it's time to reframe the conversation.
Commissioner Wilson, you wouldn't know this, but in terms of the potential for some kind of millage reduction, I have asked the staff to do some preliminary research on that. And again, if we get serious about the potential there, we have to understand what that would mean on our overall budget. Because public safety pressures and a number of other things about funding, all of those things becomes part of it. But I will tell you that if we, out of the different buckets of revenues that we have, if we get a new bucket that we can count on, what it does is it relieves pressure on the other buckets of revenues where we no longer have to take from the general fund, let's say, to try to stretch it, stretch it, stretch it, to do the other things. And I think that there's a timing issue here with federal infrastructure dollars that are currently available for transportation and transit-oriented development. And from our federal partners, we have likely a two-year window going into 2026, 2027, with some certainty there about the federal funding. And if we want to tap into any of that, the strength of our application for any of those federal funds is continued upon our ability to bring some dollars in locally. So there's a window of opportunity there that I'm a little concerned with if we miss that opportunity to holistically address these issues. But again, my premise here is that in order to give staff the direction to study and the research, the board has to have some interest in carrying it forward.
I definitely still have interest. It's a need and I still have interest. I just, you know, feel pretty strongly that if we do it, that we learned some lessons from the last go-around, you know? But I do have interest in it and I really want to be able to get to some of these solutions.
We, you know, we came to almost 42%, so we needed 50% plus one. I don't assume that we're, the starting point is that we automatically get to 42% and we just need to get 8% plus one person. But I do believe that there's a healthy percentage of the 42% that continue to want to see our community advance and help solve the transportation challenges that we have. We do need to speak to the rest to convince them, how do they see themselves in the narrative of this story as benefiting somehow in the very near future? And one way to do that is if there was some type of millage reduction or what have you that we could afford to do with the promise that the percentage of people who were paid a sales tax will mostly be our visitors. That was a question that I had, Byron. What's the estimate of the percentage of visitors who were paid the 759 million?
I haven't, I haven't gotten updated on that. I don't know if there's someone here.
What, it's a pretty simple question, I think, out of the estimates from the state. Okay, okay. Commissioner Wilson.
So yeah, so that was the summation of sort of my thoughts coming into this. And I look forward to more conversations. So I do appreciate you opening the dialogue. The last piece is, and I plugged for it the last time, I'm going to continue to do it. If you haven't ever looked at his work and the towns and counties that he's worked in, Ian Lockwood with Tool Design, the consultant that worked with the City of Winter Garden. It's really important that we get the right consultants to the table. And, you know, the West Orange community, when I met with them the last go-around, this was somebody that Mike Bullhofer, if he's, you know, enjoying his retirement somewhere, that he recommended. But I got to meet with this design group and what they, it is, the approach is very different, but I think it's worth looking at. I think it's worth investigating. And I just ask that we, that we take a look at that recommendation based on the work that they've done. So if you haven't looked him up, take a look at his work. I mean, I'm not plugging, I don't work for him, I'm just saying.
Well, we got a procurement process.
No, I understand, no, I understand that. I understand the procurement process. But I do think it's important that we look for a design or consultant group that matches the needs of our growing community. And I think it would be an important piece of the puzzle.
All right. Commissioner Bonilla.
I, you know, I just want to say that I know a lot of work had gone into this last time. And, you know, the staff did an amazing job just out there in the community and all the time they put into it. I do have a question about that procurement. Was there a procurement for anyone, were there any consultants used on this last time?
Last time?
Yeah.
Yes, there was.
Was there a procurement process for the consultant?
We used, I think, was it continuing contract? Yeah, through the continuing contract, services contract.
Yeah, the continuing services contract, which, you know, I talked to you. I was a little concerned about that because, you know, it was, with the rent stabilization, we ended up doing that same process, continuing contract, using GAI for that. And, you know, well, it was a terrible report that we got from them. Yeah, it was horrible. I'm glad everyone agrees with me. So it's just, I think we definitely should do procurements for some of these things. And those continuing services contracts, some of the contracts that are being given to them, I think we should go through the procurement process instead. So we could get more specialized people on these types of projects. We've been, you know, staff has been very busy, you know, the last couple of years in Vision 2050. So we had Vision 2050 going on, we had this transportation sales tax thing going on. I mean, it was just a whirlwind. And, you know, I've been thinking, like, I would have liked for this conversation to have started last year so that we could have had more time to really go into it. And the commissioners, us, would have had more ability to be able to work on this. But, you know, I kind of feel it's kind of late at this moment. And then looking at that, you know, saying, I wish this had started last year though, we would have had more time. Again, we were so busy with Vision 2050 and we're still busy with it. Now this year, we're working on Vision 2050, we're working on Orange Code, we're working on Vision Zero. I just don't feel that we have the time for this right now to really get it to where it needs to be. And I think that, you know, there's a couple of issues I have too with moving forward with the sales tax, taxing ourselves more. And I say ourselves because we're also taxpayers. You know, when I see things like, you know, we're voting on, we're, you know, we turned it down, but, you know, staff recommended a development that would have cost the taxpayers three, over $300 million in, you know, roads, new roads, widening roads just to benefit one developer. That development had no benefit whatsoever to the community or to Orange County, but would have costed money, would have went through two. I just learned, like, I thought it was one conservation land, the road, new road would have gone through. Learned it was actually two conservation lands, one owned by the county and one owned by the state. Also, it would have risked 90,000 jobs, which I just learned that after that case too. You know, I had, I went to Tallahassee for East Central Florida Regional Planning Council and one of our speakers happened to be someone with the Florida Economic Department, where they have a new branch for military installations. And he gave me the numbers, I actually have the brochure here. 90,000 jobs in Research Park is dependent on that military installation. And that was risked by this development because of transportation traffic issues. Good news though, we do have some federal dollars that can come in and help with that issue. But, you know, if this had come in, it would have made it, would have made it unfixable. Also, in 2013, the board in 2013 had voted to have a fiscal sustainability analysis tool that was supposed to be created by staff. They had three years to create it from 2013 to 2016. They had a deadline in 2016 to do that, make that tool. The tool doesn't exist as far as I know, right now I've been asking for it. And 2019 though, we did, remember we did all that code cleanup? Well, one of the things that was cleaned up was the deadline for that tool, which said, you know, in 2016, you know, whatever, blah, blah, blah. So that deadline was deleted, but the tool was never made. So, you know, that was like just, you know, shoved under the rug. And then we had partnership roads that were put into East Orange County in the rural area. So partnership roads are roads that staff had came up with that would help with prop share, to be able to pay for these roads, right? Well, if you look into the Florida statutes, 163, it actually discourages putting partnership roads in the rural area and recommends that it's in the urban service area instead, so that it would prevent urban sprawl. Well, Orange County was doing the opposite of that, creating more excuses for urban sprawl by putting partnership roads in the rural service area. And then we had the Grow that came, you know, back in 2016, 2013, 2016, when the Grow was recommended by staff, you know, Renza Nastati, I've said this before, was up there saying, we need the Grow, telling the community, we need the Grow in order to pay for the transportation system. But we all know what that, you know, you put more, if you put a development in it in order to pay for it, you're also going to come with more impact. And to the point where now it just destroys it and there's no way to fix it. So, you know, with all of these things going on, these decisions that have been made, you know, from 2013 to today, I just do not have any faith in Orange County with my tax dollars. And if we're going to be widening roads and increasing our costs, you know, just to benefit a developer or development that has no other, no benefit at all to the county and only, and instead risks, you know, destroying our conservation land, risk 90,000 jobs, you know, just so that this developer could put more money in their pockets. I mean, at this, I just don't have faith. And I really feel that right now we should focus on Vision 2050 and focus our time and our staff's time there so that we can get these issues that we have that's causing our transportation and traffic issues solved and have better smart, smart growth planning for the future. And I think after we have that in place, I think there'll be more trust. We have to build that trust and more confidence in the county to be able to then ask for a transportation sales tax to pay for some of these deficits, knowing that we have a better plan for the future.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bonilla, can you give clarity on your statement? Just because you just stated you don't have faith in Orange County. We are the board, so I just want to, not necessarily saying somebody out, but just can you kind of clarify what you meant by that? Because saying not having faith in Orange County means you don't have faith in us as this board's decision-makers. Staff do what we direct them to do. And so I'm just trying to understand the point you're trying to articulate. Because the way it came out, it doesn't sound right to me. Saying you don't have faith in Orange County is saying you don't have faith in this board. And so since we are decision-makers, is what, what were the point you were trying to make? So that's maybe something that staff can take to work on or something we can direct them. But just the way you stated that, that's confusing to me.
Okay, you just stated that we direct staff on what to do, right? I see it the other way around. Because staff, they go and they make recommendations to us based on information they have. And we don't always get all of the information. Like, for instance, the convention center, you know, we're in competition with Las Vegas, but we never ever got the numbers to see like how Las Vegas is doing compared to us. So we believed them that we had to grow and grow and grow in order to compete with Las Vegas. But without having all of that data and that information.
Thank you for the clarity.
You know, so it's not that, I don't think we're telling them what to do, is that, and some of these recommend, you know, I would say we have the DRC, right? Which is a sunshine meeting that staff has to have when they come up with these recommendations for us. We have the roadway agreement committee, which is also in the sunshine. But the Sustani development, the decisions for that recommendation was not in the sunshine. And I think that any recommendations that come to the board, those meetings should be in the sunshine. It's transparency. So, you know, are the decisions that we make based on these recommendations, you know, we only make decisions based on the information we have. If we don't have all the information, we can't make the best decisions.
Okay, there's always a cost of doing nothing too. And so sometimes in order to solve issues, emerging issues, and we have global issues as a community, it requires us to be proactive and not just always be reactive. us to be proactive and not just always be reactive. I don't think anyone believes that we don't have transportation or traffic challenges as a community that are growing, that are getting worse. We collectively, as a community, are going to have to address that. And that's what this conversation is about. There are lots of reasons how we got to this point. But we are elected and entrusted by the people to try to come up with some solutions. And that's what we're trying to do here, is come up with some solutions. Commissioner Gomez Caderro.
Thank you. Good morning. I have a lot of things written in here. And like you said right now, Mayor, well, I see a need in our community for this to happen. But there is some things that we have to do based on what, you know, the rest of the commissioners have said up to now. And is what Commissioner Bonilla said, there have been, you know, residents saying, you know, but how are we going to trust the county doing this and that? But one of the things, ideas, because we have to look for solutions, right, for our issues. For example, I have moms that has to drive or have to ride the bus or the public system from Avalon, from the east side to the west side, which is, you know, the theme parks and so. They have to wake up at four o'clock in the morning to try to get to the, the other side of the, of the county. And I, right now, I don't have no services to provide for them. Right now, what I'm going to do? So this could be a solution for them in one way. But this is another thing that we have to consider, Mayor, and is being attractive to, we have a problem here in Orange County and in the, in the staff. And I have to say, I work very good, very well with Public Works. I love it. I love it, Mayor. I work with them. They advise me. They help me because there's a lot of issues going on and they try to do their best. But we are short in staff. We are. There's a lot of projects to do. There are a lot of things to do. And I have to say because, I mean, I, I have become good friends of them and I have been talking to them. And on Sundays, they are working. We have a lot of people retiring, leaving. So we have to attract with salaries and so these engineers and so, so that way we can move things. Right now, if we want to put a signal somewhere, whatever, it takes three to four years before you can see a signal put in someplace. And, you know, what, what the residents will say is, oh, the commissioners are not doing anything. No. If we can put and install the signal or what's that, we will do it. But we can. And everything is a study. A study takes more than six to eight months or whatever. And, you know, before COVID, we were struggling. After COVID, we are still struggling. And, you know, and I know people, you know, have been working more than 30 years in the, in the county. Now we don't have them. So we need, and then I don't know how the process of hiring, you know, i- 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 is going, if it's slow or whatever, that we are behind in all the projects, in everything. Since I start here, I'm in my sixth year, and I still have pending things from 2019. So it's not that, you know, it's not nobody's fault. Let's put it this way. Things happen. But what can we do, Mayor? We have to let the people know that this money, if this goes through and so, that is going to be used properly to help exactly what the need is for. For example, one of the things that we have here, it says that we're going to do a, let me see, it's going to be for improving traffic signal timing. It's going to be also for installing signal.
Correct.
Okay, see, all of these things that the people doesn't read there, it comes back to us and say, oh, no. It's not like the information needs to be more, you know, complete. Like, for example, there were over 300 meetings for when the campaigning was going through. And people get through it. But what are we going to do different this time for people that didn't have a clue? And I don't know why, because it was all over the place, but they didn't, what are we going to do? You know, like, what, how can we work together? Because I remember the mayor saying once, if it's not now, when? If it's not us, who? It's true. But how can we fix this? I mean, how can we provide better services to our residents, right, in our county? If this costs a lot of money, if, if we see, you know, the billions of dollars, you know, that are going to come in, are we ready? You know, are we ready? Administrator, are we ready to provide this as soon? Let's see a pass, right? And in January, it, it kicks in. Are we going to have a plan already set? Or we're going to have to wait, you know, like a year before we can see some results, which I think that's how it's going to be? Or we are planning to, you know, hire more people, provide more, you know, salaries that, that can, you know, bring these engineers? Are we, you know, because like Mayor said, we, we, we are talking. This is our conversation, right? So we don't buy it in the sunshine or whatever. So what are we going to do? Another thing is that a list of cities that, you know, are supporting, or eight, we have 14 cities. We still have six that, what are the position, their position?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. What are their position, you know, in, in regards to this? So that would be something that we would like to know. And the other thing is, Commissioner, a procurement, you know, process take a lot of time. And we have to have a, you know, like an answer or a decision make in, in April. So that's why they talk, I, because I asked this question, why they, but they had these contractors, these consultants, because they were already working with us. So they were, you know, we, we were trying to save time. So that's why, right?
Absolutely. So as part of that, that effort, in 2022, and I mentioned, we have a number of staff committees, as well as we went through the pocket study, we developed what that approach would be, what the system, what the delivery system, that, that, one of the committees that looked at delivery, we had a delivery committee involved from procurement, from the very beginning of that process, the system from procurement, all the way through the actually, delivery of service on the, on the end. We identified an approach. So we did have an approach. In part, it was based upon what we've seen other communities, we actually visited, other communities that had the sales tax in place. We, Broward County had a number of conversations with Broward County, for example, Palm Beach County, and some others that had the plan in place, and Seminole County as well. And we, our proposal was to set up, our structure was to set up a, a, kind of a, 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 it would have been a sales tax office, a sales tax structure, it's kind of a compatible type of structure. That's what most of the other jurisdictions that have this in place, they can't absorb the, the, no other jurisdiction was able to just absorb this within their, at, at this magnitude, able to absorb this within their current structure. And so we had developed that. That was our plan. That was our approach, as well as we came up with the approach of our, of the consultant services. And so we had RFPs that were ready to go to solicit for consulting services to support each of those areas as well. With respect to our delivery schedule shortages, the staff shortages and so forth, one of those factors with respect to the public works and some of those projects is a function of funding. I mean, some of that's about funding, then some of that's about supply chain management, supply chain issues, like you mentioned with the mast arms. And many of y'all know, because we've had these conversations, some of that's on the delivery end, not, not on our end. We made, we placed the order. It is, it just takes longer for manufacturers to develop the, and produce rather the, some of those elements as well. But to your point in terms of how were we planning to approach the sales tax and delivery of those services, ensuring that we could get it done, we did, as part of that last effort, we did develop a, you know, I wouldn't call it an alternative system, but it is a comparable setup, a structure that would have assisted, it would have helped the whole process because it wouldn't have clogged up our current procurement process or service delivery with these. We had a, another structure. And again, it was based upon what we have seen as successful in some other jurisdictions that had large scale sales tax initiatives. That's how we were going to deliver the, the, the services or the projects. That's how we were going to deliver the projects. So that was on our part, as well as in links had to get portion of that. There was a rail component of that and all, you know, those services would be delivered outside of our direct delivery system. Nevertheless, we had a coordination in place for delivery of those services as well, those projects as well.
Thank you, Byron. And I have two more questions, and it's for you as well. Did we said before that it was 20 and 30 years, or it was 10 and 20 years?
The, the board at the last, when they ultimately all passed it, you said it at 20 years.
20 years?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question, you know that we started with the accelerated safety transportation program?
Yes.
With $100 million with projects, and we already approved some of them. If this goes through, what will happen with that program?
We'll, we'll continue. Those projects were designed to be immediate, impactful, to be done in five years. And that's the schedule that we are working towards. And that's, as I mentioned, you've already approved contracts. We started, the funding came available in October of 2023. And again, you've already seen some contracts come to the board. And in the next month, you'll see some additional contracts come to the board.
Awesome. And then my last question, because I wrote a lot. Okay. You know that there were a board that every commissioner, you know, picked a resident and they were part of the citizen board. But if that's going to happen again, if this goes through, if the board decided that they want this to go through, will the same people be appointed? Or it would be an opportunity to put new per, how will that work?
It's, so whatever was done in 2022 is, that, that's no longer in place. So on that oversight board, presuming this board wants to go with that same structure, the board would indeed appoint its representative, its citizen representative. And with respect to the cities, you asked about the cities, so all the 13 cities, again, last time around, two of the cities chose, they just were different animals of a, of a nature. So all those 11, so eight participated, we would pick up those same discussions. And so you heard Mayor Nelson come in with the discussions from the mayor's standpoint. On a concurrent track, that's what I was trying to word, I was looking for concurrent stat, that's the model we had, concurrent procurement and, and delivery model. But nevertheless, on concurrent track, just like last time, and I've already reached out to my peers, the city managers, city administrators in each of the jurisdictions, I sent them the mayor's memo as well, told them that certainly would encourage them to look, have someone in their staff tune in today. But we were having concurrent conversations as well and had reached an understanding and agreement with the city managers, the city administrators with respect to the plan that you saw in 2022.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Commissioner Uribe.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, this is a, this is a little hard to take in. Right now, we're being asked to turn around something within two months to get it on the ballot. And one thing that noted is, Mayor had 300 meetings, surveys, opportunity to hear from the people. And right now, we have taken out the public out of this. So we're saying, here's what we're going to do. And I, I don't know how you're going to do 300 meetings in two months. But my whole point is, I, I went to look at the numbers in my district because I know it failed by 58%. And my district had actually failed between 59 to 64%. So there must have been other areas in the county that fared better. But clearly, the residents that live in my district did not support this measure. One of the things that I had notated when we were in this process, I was never comfortable with 30 years. I know we had agreed to get to 20 years, but I still firmly believe that 20 years is too much. I have a six-year-old son, so it'll be, he'll be 26, a grown man, when this comes up, to realize if the citizens of Orange County have bought in, if they actually believe in the system. I had always touted that it needed to be 10 years because ultimately, what the vote showed is that the voters did not trust us to do this. There was no hard concrete plans. There was a lot of feedback from cities, but there wasn't an opportunity to give a lot of feedback from us as county commissioners. We each represent our district. And there was no commitment to projects. There was an overall plan. There was a commitment to the city, but there wasn't even a commitment to us as county commissioners. And to sit here and say financially, we're doing better, I don't believe it's true. Homeowners insurance has gone up. That's what we hear over and over and over, where the state is just incapable of, of helping. Food costs are going up. Rent is going up. You can't even survive. And now we're saying, give us another penny on the tax so we can do transportation. Yes. Do we have a transportation problem? Absolutely. We, we've always had one. I think when this initiative started, I think Commissioner Moore said 20 years ago, the first time they tried to, the multiple campaigns to raise taxes for transportation that have continued to fail and fail and fail. But we're going to come back and try to say, again, this conversation should have started as soon as the last one failed. We really should have gotten feedback. It would have been great for the staff to say to us, what are the numbers in your district? What do you think happened? What did your residents say? What were your, our residents were talking to us. Our residents were saying no. Then they voted no. So we heard that. And ironically, there were millions of dollars in campaign funds to support the penny tax. And there was nothing to get it to fail. We're missing the thing that had made me uncomfortable when we did this two years ago, when we originally, when we were in the final hours agreeing to the oversight committee, and we were in the final hours agreeing to the 20 years, is the guiding principles in all of this. That didn't make me feel comfortable, but I felt we got there and I felt that we could give the voters that opportunity to speak by voting. So when we took a vote that day, we took a vote to take it to the voters and allow them to say yes or no. They overwhelmingly said no. They said no to us. And now we, we talk about this plan. We heard Mayor Nelson come with their demands as a city. And I think he, he spoke on all the cities on the west side, saying, we want for us to support this. We want this, this, and this. So we've got directors of municipalities, we've got us as commissioners standing on the board today, saying, this is how we want this to go forward. But yet the people aren't involved in this process right now. And we don't even have, and, you know, when we looked at 19,000 surveys, it's what, 1.2% of our population? That was very minimal. Do we, I also have a serious concern with capacity. I have a serious concern. We don't even have enough staff to do our work now. And we're saying, we're going to give you billions of dollars to do more, to move forward, and expect that to happen. I also, during the TD, TDT process, and thank you to Comptroller Diamond, really started analyzing bonding and the cost that we pay weighing above, beyond spending out of our means of what we have and what we're capable of doing. The RFP process, or lack thereof on decisions that we're making, are also very discouraging to me. But, and then lastly, looking at what the CRC is actually trying to do and measures that they're trying to do to quote unquote, represent the voters in the other half of this. There's a lot, there's a lot to dissect here. I did read through all those pages two years ago. I analyzed, I highlighted, and I, and I came forth with a lot of thoughts. And a lot of the thoughts, unfortunately, didn't come to fruition. You know, the oversight committee, which I thought far and beyond, we, the voters deserved an independent oversight committee. And also, I felt that 20 years was too much. But I think if we're going to have a serious discussion and set that out there at 20 years, I don't feel comfortable with 20 years. I wanted 10. Seminole County has done it with 10 successfully, and now they're coming back and asking for more, and they've gone. And what I appreciate when you're in Seminole County is they're like, your penny tax at work. I mean, they're very good at promoting. And they've said, here's what we've done, here's what we're going to do, and here's what we're going to continue to do. Give us another 10 years. And that, to me, has a lot, a lot of weight in allowing the public to gauge really how they want to see this. I'm so sorry. What did you say? You know, but we couldn't even get a commitment to issues in our district. I know that everyone on this board, including our most newest member, who's been in office for a year, can tell you, pinpoint to you, transportation issues that are happening in our district, that we get phone calls to our office. Well, heck, he's having a community meeting on one in particular already. But they can call our office and they can say, we have this issue, that issue, this issue. And, and I want to preface by saying Public Works, and Brett, your team is phenomenal with what you have. Our speed bumps, our work at public safety, our trying to do sidewalks, our no parking signs, as I'm the queen of the no parking signs, as Mr. Brett tells me all the time. There are measures that are being done to help. But even with that, how much are they overextended? We just had a study done in an area of my district for safety, for speed, for speed bumps, that was a year and a half ago. We're finally coming back in around to discuss this with them, to show alternatives of what we can do and what we can't do. And then we're going to hopefully get it done in another, in another time. I have a lot of reservations with this. And I am torn because I know, do we have the staff go? do we have the staff go in a speedy way, which means long hours for all the staff that's sitting in here and that's listening to us over the next two months to put this together? And I hope it won't be anything like that eighteen-hundred-page book that I saved because I had a gut feeling this would come back. I have it under my desk, all ready to go. So if anybody needs Cliff Notes. But, um, but what I'm saying is to put that on it, knowing that we're also trying to work through Vision 2050, that the team that we're trying to accomplish to get good things in measure, knowing that what we are doing and what we are working on individually in our districts to accomplish and get done. And then to tell the staff to go put all these hours into this and to come back with something similar. In the end, it's, it's a difficult call and, and I will gather and see what the board says. But I think we're not taking enough time to listen to the people. I do not think financially anyone is stronger today than they were two years ago. On the contrary, there are bills in Tallahassee to punish homeless people from being on streets because there's so much growing in that, in that capacity to where we're now, they're passing laws to let kids go to work thirty hours a week and still go to high school. And to think that financially we are better off today, um, go to my next food drive. That's not the case. Go to our next back-to-school event. Um, go to, call, call here for how many people are calling because they can't make their rent. How many people are calling, seniors that are calling because they need their roof done and their pipes done? How many people are going to the Coalition for the Homeless? Let's, let's ask Martha R. how many people are calling? And to believe, I mean, we just celebrated the Up Center because they have freezers where people can try to afford to get protein. And we're saying, let's raise taxes. We're gonna do this. We're gonna do this forward. Um, I do appreciate the initiative the mayor has done of a hundred million dollars, which is pennies compared to what we need to do, but to see some movement, to gain that support for we can go to our residents and say, this is what we've done in our district. Excited about seeing sidewalks and the CDVG grant that's coming and, and those two hundred and nineteen million that are gonna help our communities. But to think that people are ready to go and say, I want to support increasing my taxes is gonna be very difficult to pass. I, I feel that it's gonna be very difficult. And if it's gonna be anything similar to what we did two years ago, I would not even support what we did two years ago. So unless there's some real, um, work on this, real acknowledgement of projects, real guiding principles that are gonna lead us forward, I have a lot of concerns because we know the, the issue exists. But are we really gonna put together something that's gonna be open and inclusive of everybody to have while public transit, infrastructure, even trails, even public safety for bicyclists? We had a lot of bicyclists testify during that process. So there's a lot of need out there. But, um, I am concerned. And I, at this point, don't even support a twenty-year. I would want to prove to the public that we are gonna be prudent with our dollars and we're gonna show them what we can do. We have enough shovel-ready projects sent in Public Works that we could actually turn over and get done. And I think we, if, if we wanna have a real dialogue about this, it's gonna have to change from what it was in the past. So my concern is putting this extra work on the, on the staff for two months to see if we wanna move this to the ballot. But I already have many, many reservations and I, my, one of my biggest concerns is the capacity of us even being capable and the bonding and the financial costs that will incur outside of that.
Just a couple of points I do want to clarify. You referenced, again, it goes back to a comment about RFP process and about continuing services. Please understand, that is a competitively bid process that our continuing, uh, service contract aren't ones that we just select. It is solicited, uh, they're, uh, go through the same process, RFP process, and those consultants are retained for that specific purpose. We give a list, we give an array of the type of services that they can, uh, can perform and their dollar thresholds associated with that. So those are competitively bid process. They go through the same process. The board, a commissioner member serves on it. It comes to this board for approval. And it's, uh, again, just a list of surveys. So there is a very thorough, uh, 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 RFP process, selection process. We don't do, uh, I mean, we don't do, you know, Orange County government, we don't do anything, uh, outside of those, those policies, those procedures. So I just wanted to lay that, as mentioned, and I heard you make a reference to it. With respect to the plan, uh, given all I add is, uh, in that plan, I think you would see most of those projects that were in your community or those projects that are on the list to be done were captured in that plan. It did reflect, uh, our CIP. It did reflect short-term and long-term CIP. It did reflect those projects that were in the metro plan.
I meant specific, where we were allowed to offer projects that were specific to our districts that we were aware of because there was not a commitment two years ago to any specific project. It was set here.
They were, they're, every project was on there. That's how we had that interactive tool, that you can go and see the project by where you live.
Which was not even bilingual, by the way, at that time.
But the projects were there. So the, the very specific project, every project was listed and identified in there as well. So I just want, so that it did, uh, actually identify the projects and it, it, uh, captured, uh, most of those, the community meetings that you all go to. You hear a lot of, oftentimes you hear a lot of those, uh, commitments. Uh, so those, those projects, they were, uh, were identified, the safety improvements, intersections were identified as well. There were areas like on the transit side, uh, uh, on the, the rail side. We have more definition now than we had two years ago. So that was the only area that was a little bit more generic. Outside of the links, the links have the routes were identified, the number of buses. The rail part, uh, at that time, uh, was still in development, but now we have, uh, much more definitive information on the rail side as well. But anyway, I just wanted to point, as I was making some notes about a couple of items, they were more staff-oriented, not the policy items. The policy items, that's y'all's perky out there.
All right. Commissioner Moore.
I just wanted to say that, um, if we were at forty-four percent, that means only three percent the other way we pass it.
We were at forty-two.
Oh, we were at forty, all right, four percent, sorry. I got a bad cold, so you can see me sneezing over here. My head, my mouth. Anyway, um, you know, what I hear every day in my office is they want speed bumps, they want chicanes, they want the road slowed down more, they want speed studies, they want, uh, road widening. I mean, that is the number one off, uh, interest and concern and complaint that I hear every day. So, um, I think we would be derelict in duty if we didn't take a look at it because that's the number one thing. And we're doing Vision Zero. We want our people safe and our people cannot be safe if our roads are not safe and we don't get some of these things done. Um, I did look at my district and the two precincts that passed it were certainly more transit oriented. And so I think we'd have to look at tweaking the percentage between transit and roads because that's why it didn't, didn't pass. At least in my district, I can't speak to the rest of yours. And so a lot of these issues really could be decided pretty quickly with a little bit of polling. And so we could try some different things, right? Your idea, if we, was ten years help us? If we rebate on this, the, uh, property tax, would that work? And then some, why did you vote no? You know, I don't know how much research we ever did. Why did they vote no? We don't have that information. And so some really good polling would
I don't, yeah.
And, and the county can't do, calf, staff can't do polling, but these outside interests could do that. And, um, we could take a really good look at, why did we fail? What were they looking for? Because, you know, we, we all have our districts and we have our certain things that we like or we don't like. But the polling would tell us, and if there was enough numbers there, you could look at the rural areas to the urban areas, to the suburban areas and, and take a look at what they would support. Because I, I just think, um, the need is so great that we would be derelict in duty to not take a look at it. And, and while I know there's a lot of issues here, a couple of good polls could settle all of these things, I think, for us. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, hmm. First, I did this with Joe Conco outside. Uh, so I wanna say to Brett Blackardar, our Deputy Public Works Director, just thank you. Uh, we've had a, uh, pretty heavy transportation issue, um, these past several months. And, uh, the exchange between, um, some of the folks, uh, has gotten, uh, pretty heated. And the, the patience and attention to detail and the response and if he, he has shown, um, is just, uh, been phenomenal. So I'm grateful to you, Brett, for the work that you've done specific to, uh, that particular project. As it relates specifically to transportation, I don't think anybody, at least me, uh, wants to wait forty-five minutes or an hour for a bus. And so it, it is, it is a topic that I think is certainly worth discussing. We got this memo from the mayor's office, uh, January twenty-fifth. I felt like, um, we could have got a memo sooner. Um, I mean, granted, we had a lot going on, but, uh, we can multitask. And so for me, I think that it would have been helpful to have engaged in a conversation in a sense, hey, commissioners, we're thinking about having this conversation, um, at a date to be determined. How about you reach out to your respective districts and find out why they voted yes, why they voted no? I hate that I have to say this, but I just want to be clear, like, eh, eh, there has to be a higher degree of an intentionality when it comes to communicating to the commissioners, period. Eh, 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 we have a lot of experts here who are paid very well. And while they do a good job, there are areas that they can do better. I've heard more often than not, this is unprecedented. We haven't done this. We haven't done that, or this hasn't worked. And so for me, if it didn't work, okay, was it the person? Was it the tone and tenor? Was the PowerPoint presentation too long, too short? Was, was the approach, the time, I mean, it's just, eh, 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 yeah. This organization needs to try harder to grow. It is disappointing to me to hear one of my colleagues say that she doesn't trust the organization that she is a decision-maker in. And so my thought process, being the newest person on this board, is like, what happened? What set of events, what people, what actions led her to the point where she would say that live on TV? That's important, you know? While whoever sits in the mayor's seat is the chief executive, they are the, the driving body, the board is the decision-maker. And I think that's lost on those who serve in senior leadership roles. And it's frustrating to me. It is super frustrating to me. Like her saying that I don't trust Orange County while being a county commissioner is frustrating to me. And we, as an organization, can do better. I know we can. Will it be hard? Will it take three, four, five, six? It doesn't matter. It's, it's the effort. And so, um, I am a hundred percent in having the conversation. I think that while it is hard, like Commissioner Moore, Uribe said, in, in two months, I, I think it's certainly doable. It's a conversation worth having because, you know, anyone who's ever traveled, you go to these different cities and the buses are running like that. I've never ridden the Sun Rail. And the times that I wanted to ride the Sun Rail, it wasn't running. And so really looking at, you know, what is the benefit to the folks who will use it every day? And, and articulating that, saying, hey, this is what we want to do with your money. This is when we're going to do it. And here is how it's going to benefit you. What do you think? But this memo should have came three or four months ago. Because had it came three or months, four months ago, or someone said something, then I could have been intentional with my district and had some meetings, hey, we're thinking about having this conversation again. How did you feel? Tell me why you voted yes. Tell me why you voted no. So then when we had this conversation here, it could have been one with just a little bit more meat from the folks that we were elected to represent. And so I'm just asking, uh, for those that work in, in the respective roles, is just look at how you can do things differently. I, 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 I really don't like to get into, this is better, this is good, this, because I feel like that's subjective. But what I can say is, whatever approaches have been tried before, look at them for the, the pluses and minuses a, a, and, and adjust accordingly. But, um, I, I am a hundred percent on board in having this conversation. I think that we, we are, we have the expertise and the skill set to be able to potentially engage in having this on the ballot. But it's gonna require some very intentional, uh, work on part of, uh, county staff, the, the appointed leaders and, and management and director and senior staff roles to get us to that point. But I think we can do it. But it's just, eh, we gotta do better as an organization. Like that, that is embarrassing for, for my colleague, I like to call her a friend, to be able to say that she doesn't trust, um, folks in the organization. And so it's not about the trust. It's like, okay, what led to that? Because that didn't happen overnight. And so how do we fix that so that we have a, a better relationship, a more engaging relationship? One that is intentional in communication, one is more inclusive in communication, and one that, uh, allows us, uh, maybe a more collegial access to the folks that are, you know, in the weeds, doing it day in and day out. And so, uh, Byron, I don't really have a lot of comments. I think I've shared with you before kind of what my, is more the, the mass transit option because I've, I've ridden the bus, I've, I've worked with families and, and youth that ride the bus, and it's not fast enough. And for folks who are working in a theme park or at a hotel, if you've worked in those environments, you know, they have points or occurrences and you get so many corners, you get right up, and you lose your job. And you can only say my bus was late so many times before the supervisor or manager doesn't believe you. And I've lost my job because of the, the bus didn't come on time, or I just had a set of events, or just life happens. And part of my life was that, you know, in my one year or whatever, maybe I had three instances where the bus didn't come on time, but that added to maybe family being sick, me being sick, and now I'm out of a job. We, we have to do what we can to make sure that we provide, uh, you know, the, the best service possible. And, and with the recent improvements, uh, you guys have made some strides, but we can certainly do better. And obviously, if, if the sales tax were, were to pass for transportation, we can do even better than that. But I think it, 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 it spans all the way to the back to the approach. Before we even get into the topic on any given topic, how can we engage in a better, more inclusive environment to, uh, members of the board so that we can walk lockstep? And Mayor, that's the only comments I have. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, appreciate the dialogue. Um, I will tell you that none of us have a crystal ball. And, you know, when, in twenty twenty-two, we went through the, you know, it was a tough period of time. We went through twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I don't have to tell you all what we went through. But in terms of the, the impact on our staff, we have had, uh, the kitchen sink thrown at us over time. And I think it's a little bit, uh, unreasonable to, to know when to, to execute something. I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, uh, Scott, but, um, really for myself, wrestling with this issue about the sales tax or when is the best time? You know, I've wrestled with that. Is this the right time? Is it not the right time, uh, to, to move forward? And I wish I had a crystal ball and I could have said, the economy would be doing better, a number of things. Because really, when we started twenty twenty-three, the economists were projecting that we were likely gonna have a recession. Okay? And until recently, those economists didn't change that. So I'm not toned there. Uh, eh, eh, if, if I had advanced, uh, even the conversation to have this, what, that we're having today at that period of time, you, you all, the public would have looked and said, now, is he being unrealistic here? So, uh, so I don't agree with you that, um, it could have happened earlier. No, we've been wrestling with a lot of issues. We've had board meetings that go start one day and end the next day. Uh, the preparation for those board meetings and everything that happens here is, um, is a, is a heavy lift. It's a burdensome task for us to do and trying to, we've already spent a couple of hours talking about this issue at this point. Uh, our board meetings are laden with just a lot of things. And quite frankly, even the community conversations, I don't, I don't think that our community up until now was ready to have the conversation. Okay, in all fairness, because I'm out there, just, just like you all are. As the year went through in twenty twenty-three, I believe that our community got its legs up under it and the optimist, optimism grew. I don't agree that, um, the public doesn't have confidence in Orange County. Because every day they demonstrate that they do have confidence in our county. Now, is that a hundred percent of the people? Absolutely not. So the goal is to move the needle. This conversation today is about, uh, are you interested? Eh, eh, it sounds to me at this point, that what I'm hearing, the general consensus is, I'm not ready to say no, no way on a sales tax, but maybe, uh, maybe it's ten years. Maybe it's some other, a number. Uh, maybe we need to get more input. But we got a lot to get to this point, to get to the point where we advance it to the ballot. We had tons of community engagement. What I will tell you also is that the community engagement, if we decide to just go out and do fact-finding today and direct staff to bring back, we will have to hit some benchmarks at a certain time to make a final decision by April twenty-third or whatever the date was to, to get it on the ballot. That community engagement will not stop then. That community engagement must go forward all the way till November, uh, the eighth, I think it is, is Election Day. It will have to go forward then. It will have to go forward then. We can only advance this type of, uh, taxation or referendum to the ballot during a general election. Uh, we can't advance it during, uh, the off-year, and so therefore, couldn't make this decision in 2022 because we couldn't advance it to the ballot then. And so to, I think that's an unreasonable expectation, you can't advance it to the ballot in 2022. Economy is projected to, to be in recession, and a lot of other things were happening. Uh, I'm happy to, to say that we didn't end up in a recession. Uh, don't know what 2024 is going to bring us. Uh, we could find ourselves in a number of calamities. I did not think it would be appropriate to bring, advance this until people, we got more people back into the homes, dealing with the homeless issues, we've done that. Uh, I did not want to advance this forward until we got to the point where we had looked internally, uh, at our operations, see what we could do. We advanced the accelerated transportation plan, you've seen that. Uh, I did not want to advance this conversation until we started executing on that. Uh, all of that took time. So if, if you were sitting at this seat, you might, you might see it a little bit differently. And if I were sitting in your seat, I might see it differently also. But at the end of the day, the public wants us to be visionaries, to do something about it, not just keep kicking the can down the road. And so that's what this conversation is. And so, uh, if, if I'm correct in at least kind of assessing what I've heard at this point, uh, you need more information by which to make decisions. That decision, quite frankly, as we do the research, still may be no. It still may be, we do not want to advance it to the ballot, and that's okay. But if we don't get to that point, and we don't do the fact-finding, then your decision obviously would be, no, I don't have any information. So we are, we're willing to, uh, to make the noble attempt. In the interim, I would encourage every one of you, as we're doing our fact-finding within the respective timeline, have your own meetings within the community. Get out there, uh, get out there and develop what you think should be the projects in your respective areas. Bring that back, let the staff kind of deal with that. We will hire some consultants to help us with the process. Uh, we will use, uh, the breadth of our ability to execute, and I will tell you that this, this team of people, they are good at executing. Uh, we got through COVID, we executed, and that was the toughest time that anybody living now has been through. Uh, uh, you know, that's the toughest time that they've been through, and we got through it. So I'm optimistic about it, and, uh, with that, unless I'm wrong, unless I have read differently what you've said, uh, I didn't hear a total no. We don't want to try it, we don't want to study it, we don't want to research it. Am I right, or am I wrong? Okay, okay, so I'm accurate. So we will owe it to you to do all the research that we can, to put a process in place, you owe it to us, to be more engaged, to have your respective meetings.
Wait, engaged, re-.
Okay, I mean, eh, what I mean by that is, I heard you all say, well, eh, we didn't engage the community. Okay, during the, during the last process. I mean, I don't want us to debate that. But, listen, listen, eh, 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 it's not a debate, but eh, what I'm, what I'm simply saying here is, help us. Help us get the information by which we can make the best decision that we possibly can. We can craft the best plan that we can going forward on behalf of our citizens. That's all I'm asking you to do. That takes input, okay? That takes input to perfect that plan, okay? So with that, let's, uh, we still got an item, hopefully we can get this one done, and, and this is a heavy item, uh, going forward, uh, with, uh, the next, uh, item on the agenda. And so, uh, to, uh, members of the public, we're going to move forward on our agenda at this point, uh,